Bring this September twentieth school board meeting to order. George, could you take?
Sure.
Role.
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Nasa.
Here.
All present.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We talk about our district goals at this point, every meeting, every time, we talk about our district goals. Might get boring to some, but I think it's important because it keeps us, I want to make sure that it keeps us focused. So our first is student achievement, and you know, that's the primary goal. That's what we're doing. I think our state grades this time reflect that even though, I'm not thrilled with that measurement system, but we improved incredibly, and so we did a nice job of that. A lot of other great things going on right now. Financial prudence, we continue to focus and spend every tax dollars if it was our own, and maximize the value from every dollar we get, and we keep working and working at that. And then, community engagement is, you know, our community, it helps us, and you can see it in our agenda every time. And every week, we have meetings, and we meet with them and talk, and get their input, and keep moving in with their help. So with that, I would move on to recognition.
We don't have any recognition tonight.
Superintendent's report to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. Going on to the theme of our district goals of academic achievement and growth and financial prudence, as it's been shared in newspapers and we've shared via press release, our state report card was released last week, and as you said, we saw a significant improvement. We improved in two overall component grades in progress, going from a B to an A, and gap closing going from a D to an A, as well as six subcomponent grades, those grades below there. And Aaron, at our upcoming work session, is going to go in greater detail as to the report card, and where we still have areas of growth, and where we've had some successes. But I did want to share that as we take a look at our Destination 2020, we talk about wanting to be a premier district, and we talk about, as it says here in the last sentence, that Strongsville City Schools will rank in the top ten percent of all school districts in Ohio by June of 2020. So there's a lot of different metrics you can use, and you know, in the past, people have used performance index. You can use the measurement that the state uses for that overall grade. But one of the things the state does is it releases the grades for all school districts around the state of Ohio, so all public school districts. So this is simply a calculation that I did. If you take that grade and switch it over to a GPA format, so if you transfer all of the As to a four, all of the Bs to a three, and so on and so forth, and average that out and rank order Strongsville, that put us, this past year, forty-ninth out of the six-hundred-and-eight public school districts in the state of Ohio, which puts us in the top eight percent of all school districts in Ohio, which is something to celebrate and something to be proud of. And as we take a look at the financial prudence of it, if you take a look at the, I know these are small, but these are the tax rates in all of the school districts in Cuyahoga County. You could see that Strongsville's tax rates among the lowest in the county, but we're seeing performance ranks in the top eight percent of the state. So as we continue to work, as we've been continuing to share the need for an upcoming levy on the November ballot and the reasons for that, we've been able to be financially prudent. We've been able to go eleven years without additional funding. But it's about preserving opportunities for our students, keeping them to have the updated technology, textbooks, and resources, and to continue the path that we're on, to continue to achieve and excel. Additional funding is needed based on the forecast that George is going to share. But I did want to give a highlight as to how the funding that we do receive, the tax base for our city, as well as the value that we give based on our results, and this one measure is something to celebrate for our district.
Excellent. I mean, that's the definition. When we say we want to maximize the value of every tax dollar we get, that's the definition. When you're in the top eight percent performance-wise, but you're in the, you're near the bottom on the tax burden side of it, that's getting banged for your buck. So that's what we're trying to do, and we continue to keep working at that every week and every day.
And if I could say something, the thing that I enjoy being on this board and watching Cameron, your team, and everybody else work, is that we've had a couple setbacks in the past couple of years. But everybody is focused, everybody's working hard towards that goal. And for you to be in the top eight percent two years before your goal, to maintain that, to continue to grow that, and again, through those setbacks, you guys have just kept working hard. Not just the administration, but the support staff, teachers, everybody's worked hard towards that goal. And the one thing that we were lacking in the past was a clear definition of where we wanted to be. So congratulations.
Thank you. And that concludes my report to the community.
Public comment. Seeing we have no public comment, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have the June twenty-eighth, July sixteenth, July thirty-first, and August second, board meetings to approve. Can I have a motion?
No move.
Thank you, Duke. Can I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Jane. Any discussion? We've all read them. Any comments, any? George, could you take role?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. That brings us to the treasurer's report. George?
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. A few items for your consideration tonight. The first three, A, B, and C are related, the annual budget, the five-year forecast, and changes to the student activity programs and budgets. I'm going to make my way to the podium to present the budget and the five-year forecast. Alright, so this is the annual budget presentation, which I also tied to the five-year forecast. Currently with school funding, the annual budget has to be adopted by September thirtieth, and the five-year forecast by October thirty-first. The five-year forecast is submitted twice a year, October thirty-first and May thirty-first. Just to note, that legislation was changed in June, where starting next school year, the fall five-year forecast doesn't have to be approved until the end of November, it's submitted to OD. So they pushed it back a month. But I still like to tie it to the annual budget, that those two are related. Also with the annual budget, in the past two years, I've prepared the budget under that, under ASBO's Ohio, or Ohio, the National Association of School Business Officials, Metatorius Budget Award Program. For this year, I don't have the book done yet, but it doesn't need to be submitted until three months after the board approves it. So I do have all the information and plan on compiling the book and submitting it to the awards program, once again, for this year. So we've received it two consecutive years, I'm planning on continuing the, continuing the award program. Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, district goals and focused spending. These are items that Mr. Rabat touched on last meeting, so I won't spend too much time on them. But where we're focusing our budgets, academic and growth, as you can see, implement, make our space an integrated part of the curriculum, develop a culture playbook, administer and enhance the pre-K to twelve common assessments. For financial prudence, research the feasibility of purchasing GPS and video for inclusion of all school buses, a cost benefit of district-wide recycling program, enhancing financial controls, and implement the district safety plan in collaboration with the Strongsville Police Department. And community engagement, develop promotional marketing video highlighting key components of our organization, utilize the business advisory committee, utilize curriculum advisory committee, and create a parent ambassador group. Just the historical implemented cost efficiency measures from two thousand to the present. Reduction of ninety-nine, one hundred ninety-nine positions since two thousand and seven, which is consistent with declining enrollment. We've eliminated six buildings, repurposing one. We switched to a self-insurance plan, which has saved us about one-point-three million dollars annually, created an online option for our students, which has saved us two-hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars annually, where those students otherwise gone to charter or online schools. And we've also implemented a new investment strategy that increased our interest earnings by close to four-hundred thousand dollars over the past two years. So going into the budget, personnel trends for this school year, and this is all funds. In all funds, we're budgeted at seven-hundred-and-thirty positions. Last year, we were budgeted at seven-hundred-and-fifteen. We've increased by fifteen. And majority of the increase is due to enrollment needs, where we've needed to add teachers, special education teachers, aides, and then also for literacy coaches, three of which are paid under the literacy grant. And as you can see on the pie chart below, forty-eight percent of our staff is made up, made up of teachers, and fifteen percent is made up of aides. So a good portion of, more than fifty percent, about sixty-five percent of our budget of staffing is going into the classroom. And then three percent of our budget, of our personnel budget is administration. Estimated resources for all funds, these are all of our funds, beginning, unencumbered cash for all of our funds is forty-one million, forty-one-point-two million. Estimated revenue that we'll anticipate receiving all funds is ninety-four-point-two, leaving us total estimated resources for fiscal year nineteen of one-hundred-and-thirty-five million dollars. And tying that to the expenditures, the annual appropriations for all funds. The key one, the general fund, which touched more in the five-year forecast, is seventy-four-point-six million of the total of one-hundred-and-one-point-two million of the total appropriation. We've also had three-point-three million dollars of carryover encumbrances, which was part of last year's budget that were encumbered moving into this year for total appropriation of one-hundred-and-five million dollars. Breaking down the general fund appropriation, the total general fund appropriation is seventy-four-point-six million. Breaking it down by function of where the dollars are going into the different categories, instruction, support services, extracurricular activities, debt service, and other uses, as you'll see, the first section, instruction, are, the total percent of the budget is fifty-five percent. And then if you go down to student support services and look at the first two lines, pupil instructional staff, that's another nine percent. So sixty-five percent of the budget is, again, in the classroom. And then leaving us, if you break it down by per pupil amount, it's, the budget is about thirteen point, uh, not thirteen, thirteen thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty dollars per student. Moving into the five-year forecast, the five-year forecast, the contents are the major assumptions, the general fund revenues, general fund expenditures, and the five-year forecast summary. The major assumptions is always the collection rate and, the collection rate and the collection split, which plays the biggest impact on our, on our revenues, which impact the property taxes, which is the largest portion of our revenues. For this fall collection period, last, last fall, the collection rate was ninety-eight percent. This fall, the collection rate was ninety-eight-point, forty-eight percent, so it increased a half a percent. And a half a percent means about half a million dollars. So that, that change does play into the forecast, and with the five-year average of the collection rate, as you can see, it over the historical, it's between the ninety-eight and a half to ninety-seven and a half. I averaged it out to ninety-eight. And then the collection split, as you'll notice in our tax revenues when we get to that section, our tax revenues are going to be down this year, but if you notice in the collection split, last year, we collected one-hundred-and-two percent, where this year, we're collecting ninety-seven percent. And that was the, that mainly had to do with the way the calendar year falls, and the tax break that was associated with everyone paying their tax bill at the end of last year, instead of splitting it at a hundred percent. So it was just paid more, a hundred percent, more people paid a hundred percent of their tax bill in December, rather this year, rather in this fiscal year, so. The commercial collection rate saw a slight decrease by two percent to ninety-one, from ninety-three to ninety-one percent. As you can see, historically, the commercial collection rate fluctuates from, from year to year. And then the commercial collection split, that also fluctuates quite a bit from year to year. Last year was at a hundred-one percent, this year estimating about ninety-six-point-sixty-five percent. This slide just reiterates what I, what I just went over on the charts. Another part of the assumptions for the revenues, I know we've all heard about it, talked about it, is the reappraisal for the county. Count, collection year two thousand and eighteen is the current assessed valuation, we're at one-point-four million. Collection year nineteen, the forecasted amount, that is the county's reappraisal amounts. We're anticipated to increase by eight-point-eight percent, which will, which will bring up the assessed valuation to one-point-six million. Where we'll see a slight additional increase in revenues is in the inside millage, which with House Bill nine-twenty, which I'm going to talk about a little bit later, and on the impacts of the individual property owner, House Bill nine-twenty adjusts the effective rate, so the remaining levies will adjust down, so we're still collecting the same, same amount of taxes. So the only change we'll see is on the inside millage, which, which is about eight-hundred, nine-hundred thousand dollars a year. But I'll talk, there's a chart at the end that I'll talk about on how the, the impact per individual homeowner.
I checked mine, my taxes went down.
Yeah, and you'll see why at the, at the end, so. State funding, the forecast assumes that we've lost the three-point-six million dollars TPP. We've been, we received a slight portion of it, held harmless from, over the past couple of years, but starting this year, it's completely phased out. And then since two thousand and seven, we've been phased out eight-point-six million dollars altogether. And then also with the state funding formula, we're on a guarantee, about fifty percent of our funding, state funding is on the guarantee amount, and this year, there was a one percent decrease in the guarantee. This year's the second year of the state biennium, they've been targeting the guarantee in the past, for the next two bienniums. I'm just anticipating or forecasting another decrease to the guarantee. In the forecast, I build a five percent decrease. Expenditures, general, general fund, staffing changes. And the others, in the other slide, I showed a fifteen, a fifteen personnel increase. That was all funds, general fund, it's a nine percent increase. And the forecast also assumes a seven percent increase in healthcare from fiscal year nineteen to twenty-two. Fiscal year sixteen, we saw a three percent increase last year, we, for fiscal year seventeen, we saw a five percent increase. In eighteen, we kept the premium flat. I'll know what the adjustment is. The premium will be in the next couple of months, as we're going to start into our renewal process coming in January. And then also, the forecast assumes a half a million dollars for technology upgrades in each fiscal year from nineteen to twenty-three. So moving on to our revenues, the biggest chunk of our revenues is local taxes, where we're receiving seventy percent of our revenues from local taxes, or forty-eight-point-two million. Then state foundation, which is about fourteen percent, or nine-point-eight. And then you have the state allocation, the TIF revenues, and the remaining, three-point-seven from other revenues. Then as noted on the chart below, with the elimination of the tangible personal property tax, it's a reduction of eight-point-six million dollars that we've lost annually since two thousand and seven. Local property taxes, two thousand and nineteen, you'll see, I'm estimating forty-eight-point-two million in property taxes, which is a three-point-eight million dollar decline from two thousand and eighteen. If you go back to this chart where I was showing the collection split in the beginning, where the collection split represented the bigger chunk of that decline, where we received most of that collection in two thousand and eighteen, which impacted us. This year, we're going to see it dip, and then, starting in twenty twenty, it should, it should go, it should normalize back again. The state foundation, the biggest change here is in two thousand and eighteen, we had the one-point-one million of TPP supplement. Four-hundred thousand dollars of that was twenty percent of the supplement from seventeen. And then, thanks to, thanks to Representative Patton, not Patton, Senator Dolan, where, he was able to get us legislation where we received the one-time seven-hundred thousand dollar reimbursement for the TPP in eighteen, so that's why that TPP is one-point-one million. Now it's finally phased out starting in nineteen, so we're seeing a decrease there. And then, the core aid, nine-point-six for this year, and then, due to the decrease of the guarantee, a five percent, five percent each biennial budget, it's about a four-hundred thousand dollar decline. The state homeless reimbursement is the homestead and rollback. That's been consistent, about six-point-one, six-point-two million dollars. As you've seen, the previous years, there was a TPP reimbursement, which is, as mentioned, fully phased out. Other revenues, in two thousand and eighteen, in the blue is the TIF. Last year, we saw a slight increase due to one-time contributions from various commercial businesses we were able to obtain due to tax changes. And then, they should normalize back to two-point-one million dollars this year. And then other revenues, last year was two-point-eight million, this year I'm estimating two-point-six million. And the primary difference in the decline is, in two thousand and eighteen, we received a portion of out-of, out-of-district tuition that was for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, so it doubled up in that fiscal year. And then in nineteen, I'm estimating two-point-six million, and then twenty twenty, down to two-point-one. And the biggest, one of the biggest reasons for that decrease is, in, in this past July, which is fiscal year twenty nineteen, we received a two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, a two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollar refund from the Bureau of Workers' Comp for premiums that were paid. So the past couple of years, we received a refund, we pay the, we pay the premium in December, and then come July and August, they say they have too much money, and they have to refund it back to us. So we, past couple of years, we've been fortunate to get a refund back, back from them. I'm not planning on it every year. General fund revenues decrease, you could see the decline from eighteen to nineteen. And a good portion of it is the elimination, the TPP and the property tax decline. General fund expenditures, where our money goes, eighty percent of our budget is salary and benefits, and then eleven percent is purchase services. And you could see the rest of the breakdown, it's been pretty consistent from year to year. Our salaries, last year, we spent forty-point-two million, this year, I'm anticipating forty-one-point-seven million. And when I do salaries, I look at everybody, and move them on the salary schedule, see where they're at. The reason for the, the increase from eighteen to nineteen is six-hundred thousand was budget savings that we realized in eighteen, adding those budget savings back, three-hundred thousand dollars for COLA increases, four-hundred, eight-hundred thousand dollars in step movements, and then netting that for two-hundred thousand for the differential of higher-paid employees separating from the district and newer employees coming in. And then each year, the, the increase is based off of just the step increases that are negotiated in the current contracts. Benefits, fiscal year eighteen, sixteen-point-one million, fiscal year nineteen, seven, seventeen million, a nine-hundred thousand dollar increase of that amount, five-hundred thousand dollars is due to healthcare, two percent to other in life, and, and two-hundred thousand for STRS, SRS increases. Purchase services, as you'll see this year, there's going to be a little bit of a jump from nineteen to eighteen. The biggest chunk, the biggest reason there is, quite a few purchases were made, were, the money was encumbered at the end of June, spent in July and August, which, which was for last school year, but carried into this, into this fiscal year. And since we're on a cash basis, it gets reported in the fiscal year that the transaction was, the transaction was paid, not when the transaction was initiated. So our encumbrance has increased by five-hundred-and-forty thousand in this category, or for this category. And then we also realized three-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars in budget savings, which we're at, we're at it back in. Materials and supplies, same thing, the total budget is two-point-four million. Last year, we spent one-point-four million. We had a five-hundred thousand dollar carryover. A big, the biggest chunk there was textbooks. Textbooks were, the purchase order was done in May and June, and we didn't pay it until July, which was fiscal year nineteen. Then we also realized the budget savings of four-hundred thousand. Other objects and transfers, the biggest increase you'll see there is in fiscal year nineteen, with the transfers, one-point-nine million dollars. The reason for that is fiscal year eighteen, transfers are going to take place in fiscal year nineteen. So there's two years, two years worth of transfers in fiscal year nineteen, as you can see in eighteen, there wasn't any. And then to wrap it up, I'm going to go over the slide, but I'm going to move on to the next one. I just wanted to show that, starting in the last fiscal year, twenty twenty-three, we have the, we start again with the renewal levy coming off. So that's the first year the renewal levy comes off, and that's half of the revenues, as we'll collect half. Then twenty twenty-four is the first year. So what I like to show it is putting the renewal levy back in the top to go over the deficit spending. So on the next slide, this is with the renewal levy back in the top in twenty twenty-three. As you can see, that, that, beginning in this school year, we will be deficit spending as our, by five-point-eight million, where revenues are exceeding, or expenditures are exceeding our revenues. Our revenues declined by five-point-eight million, and the primary reasons for that is one-point-eight million due to that tax split, two, two million dollar refund from the Cleveland Clinic, one-point-one million dollar TPP supplement coming off, the SF fourteen, the other tuition from students, four-hundred thousand, and projected decline in interest, about a hundred thousand. So that's for that five-point-eight million, and the revenue declines coming in, and then expenditures are increasing by seven million, and the primary reasons for that are salaries, one-point-five million, six-hundred of which were savings, nine-hundred thousand for benefits, one-point-four million in purchase services, a million, a million in materials and supplies, and one-point-seven million in other sources, which were the transfers. So again, the issue that we need to address is the deficit spending. We've already gone over the criteria on how, when we come into this issue, this situation, what we do, we have the levy on the ballot.
George, could you tell me the difference between the two slides? One is with renewal.
Yeah, so the difference is-
Because they appear almost identical, I mean, what-
They, they are identical. What I did was, you see in the fifth year, the revenue expenses is fifteen-point-two million?
Okay.
That's because the renewal levy is taken on, yeah, I have to report, I have to report it on the bottom.
Okay, so you're just-
So I'm just adding the renewal levy back.
So which way do you, so which way do you report it for the official five-year forecast?
This way, I report it for the official five-year forecast.
Okay.
But what I wanted to show was the deficit spending.
Okay.
For, in the forecast, that needs to be addressed. So we're continuing to, as you can see, we're continuing to deficit spend. Each year, we'll get a little bit of savings, but based on the savings we've been getting, it's not going to be enough to solve the deficit spending issue. And then our cash balances, this is the same slide I've been showing. And if the TPP would have never went away, in that third, in that twenty-third year, we'd be about fourteen million dollars, the positive. But instead, we're close to nine million dollars in the negative with, with the TPP being gone. So if that, that TPP was still there, we'd, we'd be in a better situation.
Okay.
Thank you, Governor Kasich.
And then, as I mentioned, the county reappraisal. So the reappraisal, so what the county does is, every six years, there's a reappraisal, then every, and then, in between that, every six years, there's a triannual update, so it's every three years, there's some sort of update. But the real update is that, the reappraisal, then they have the triannual update to update the reappraisal. The last reappraisal was done in two thousand and twelve, so that, this, this year was two thousand and eighteen, was the next time it was due. And then the following time, it won't be again until twenty twenty-four. How the county comes up with our property taxes, the value derived by taking thirty-five percent of the market value of the property. So what they try and do is adjust the property values to the market values. As I mentioned, with, with the reappraisal, as property values go up, effective rates go down, so we're still collecting the same level of taxes. If property tax, if property values go down, the effective rate goes up, so you're still collecting that same level. But the effective rate will only go up, up until the voted millage. So if your property drops too far, then that's where you could lose some money. Because if, if, if your millage was five million, and your effective rate needs to be six to collect the same level, it's, the effective rate's only going to be five. With that increase, it was under, governed under House Bill nine-twenty, which was passed in nineteen seventy-six. And what it does, just to read the definition, is House Bill nine-twenty removes inflationary revenue growth from applicable property by requiring adjustment to the voted millage rate, thereby resulting in a lower effective millage rate. So, impact to the homeowners, Strongsville City, the whole city in general, the valuation increased by eight-point-eight million. To offset this increase, the effective rates will decrease by the same percentage to ensure that the levies generated the same level of revenue as they did when they were initially passed. Once the effective rate is set, the effective rate is the same for every homeowner in the city. So what does that mean for the individual taxpayer? If your home, if your home values increase more than nine percent, then you will see a slight increase to your taxes. If your home values increase less than nine percent, then your taxes will probably stay the same or even decrease. So moving on to the next chart, as Mr., so you see on this next chart, if you had no increase, if a two-hundred thousand dollar home stayed at two-hundred thousand dollars during this reappraisal, they would see a seven-point-five percent decrease in property taxes. Where you're going to see it start leveling out is at, is about seven to eight percent increase. At an eight percent increase in property valuation, your taxes are going to go slightly up, probably stay the same, point-one-six percent. up, probably stay the same, point one six percent. A nine percent increase, your, your taxes are gonna go up one percent. Um, for me, I'm a homeowner in Strongsville, mine went up nine point nine two percent, my taxes are gonna go up by one point nine percent. Uh, so, it's not a one-for-one, as your property values go up by nine percent, doesn't mean your taxes are gonna go up nine percent. It's based on where you fall on this reappraisal, because with House Bill nine twenty, it adjusts the rates down, so how I, how I calculated it is, the current effective rate is seventy four point eight mil, eight mils for the entire city, our portion of it is about forty-one point zero two mils of that amount, the rest is divided up between the county, city, metro parks, libraries. Um, and then with this increase, the effective rate's gonna drop, and I'm anticipating it to drop to sixty-nine point four million. Um, and just to give another example, Mr. Neso, you said yours were gonna go down, so using my house as an example, mine went up nine point nine percent, I'm gonna see a one percent increase. I believe Mr. Neso's house value went up by four percent, and he's gonna see about a three point five percent decrease in property values. So it all depends on where each individual home fell in this reappraisal. Um, if anyone wants to see where their home fell, there's been simulations published by the, by Cleveland dot com, where you can plug in your information, then also on the Cuyahoga County Budget Commission website, there's also a simulator out there as well. So that concludes my presentation, if there's any questions, comments, or feedbacks.
Nice job.
I, I have one question. What happens when we have brand-new homes being built? How does that impact all of this? Do you know, or?
Yeah, so, it, it goes into, um, it goes into the valuation, it doesn't impact the effective rate, it's just money coming on. The same way as if a demolition or an abatement, or not abatement, demolition or an exemption comes off. So, using the same theory, a new home comes on, the assessed valuation comes with it, but the effective rate's gonna stay the same. With an exemption, like the Cleveland Clinic, their entire value's gonna come off, and the effective rate's gonna stay the same. So it does, as new homes come in, we will see a little bit of growth, um, but we're starting to see Strongsville cap out for the majority of it, I know there's small little pockets still, but that's few and far, far between.
George, that, that additional revenue, though, that gets normalized once they do a reevaluation.
Right.
And then it goes, so if, if a new house comes on the, on the block, if a new house is built, we do get, the effective rate is applied, we get that new money. Is it three, or is it the sixth, do you have to wait the six-year cycle, or is it every three-year cycle that it gets normalized?
The three-year, every, the three-year, they'll look at the, they'll look at the rates again, and depending on where the market is, they'll address the, the county rates to the market rate.
So if residents wanna do the school a favor, you want to build that house a month after the eval, the three-year evaluation?
Right.
Thank you.
That's all I had on the forecast and the, alright. Alright, while, while I'm up here, I'll just finish off the rest of the agenda. So Exhibit C, or Item C, Exhibit C is the Student Activity Program Budgets and Purpose and Goals. I went through each, each student activity and updated it based on the fiscal year eighteen, cash balances, made any budget changes as necessary, in the exhibit, you can see what's changed. The only new budget, I did create seven new budget centers under Fund Four, Fund fourteen, and that was for the school libraries, uh, that was for a place for them to put their fees and, fees and fines for, passed through or lost library material, so they could use it again for replacing those items, where before that money went into the general fund. Um, and then Item D is inventory, or invoice order approvals, uh, there's three, the first two related to Fund Three Hundred. Um, the, they were purchased in the eight, eight, August eighth and August fifth, and the invoice date was, or the PO date was after August twenty-second and August tenth. Um, I think the primary reason for that was a change in the athletic department, and then the third one, um, was for auxiliary service, St. Joseph and John's, using their auxiliary service funds, uh, was purchased eight-one, the purchase order date came in at eight-twenty-four, uh, so another after the fact, and they do have money to pay for it, it just became a timing issue of when the clerk came back to work during the summer break, and the renewal of this, of this program. So, for all three, there's, there's funds in their accounts to, to pay these. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, nice job.
Thanks.
Nope, I keep coming back to that eight percent, we're in the top eight in the lower, the lower portion of the tax, which is, uh, says a lot. Um, with that, that brings us to timely information, back to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Neso, I just wanted to share that we've got an exciting opportunity tomorrow night, um, our Strongsville Mustang football team plays Solon, and each week, the Ohio High School Athletic Association picks a, a game, um, to feature, uh, and, and broadcast live across the entire state, so they've picked, uh, the Solon-Strongsville game, so not only will it be a great football game of two highly-ranked teams, uh, but it will be broadcast throughout the state, and based on that, uh, we will have, I think, seven total minutes of, of airtime promoting Strongsville. Uh, I'll have some time to talk, Mr. Smithberger will, and then Mr. Benson and Mr. Faust have, uh, developed some promotional materials that will go on, so that'll be cool to promote, uh, our school district throughout the entire state, and, and hopefully, although it'll be a tough game, we'll get a Mustang victory a, as well, so we're excited about that. And then coming up in the next few weeks, we do have, uh, parent-teacher, the Fall Parent Teacher Conference Nights. Uh, I did wanna make mention, because we are doing things a little differently this year, uh, parent-teacher conference nights are determined by a collaborative group of staff and parents when we build our calendar every two years. So, we heard from the parents on the group that it was extremely difficult when you had all the schools on conference nights on one night. So in the past, we would pick two days in October, it would be for pre-K to twelve, uh, so what we're trying this year is breaking it up, so on Wednesday, October third, middle school and high school, uh, will have conferences, the fourth, we'll get preschool elementaries and middle school again, the October ninth is just the high school, and October tenth is just the preschool and elementary. So this gives two opportunities, if you have children throughout the district, uh, opportunities to attend those conferences, and again, these are full school days, uh, and so students and school will be in session on those days, and the times are listed there, and they're on our website and shared out in our Mustang moments, so we invite all of our parents to come in and continue to collaborate with us and build that relationship, so we're working together for the success of our students. And with that, that concludes timely information, uh, and I'm gonna turn it over to Steve Brechner, our Operations Manager for the Business Services Report for this month. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, the first item, uh, in Business Services Section is the athletic, uh, sorry, the high school and middle school rental fee rates be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education approves the schedule of rental fees for the auditorium at the high school and middle school as listed in the exhibit, and that's Exhibit D.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, George, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane.
Okay.
Any discussion on the rates? I looked through them, I applaud your efforts, um, of going through the rates of streamlining and standardizing the process, and making sure that we take control of the buildings to make sure that we know who comes and goes, and that everything's the way it should be, so nice work on that.
Thank you.
I agree, I think it's good that you did this, I just wish they were letting more, but, but I, I agree, it was a good, good move.
Any other comments? Um, George, you wanna take a roll?
Yep.
Mr. Grisen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, the second item, our bus routes and stops, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that all bus routes and bus stops presented by the Transportation Department for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year be approved, and that the Operations Manager and Supervisor of Transportation be authorized to adjust the routes and stops as necessary during the school year. The third item is transportation for non-public students, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the school bus transportation for the listed students in the following exhibit be declared impractical. Time and distance required to provide transportation, the cost of providing transportation in terms of equipment, maintenance, personnel, and administration, and the additional service unavoidably disrupts current transportation schedules, and be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education, in lieu of providing transportation, pays parents of students attending these schools, this reimbursement will be based on the amount allotted by the state, and that is Exhibit E. Uh, also the fourth item, uh, the gifts that were, uh, given to the district, South Park Mall donated five hundred dollars to be used towards the purchase of school-themed T-shirts for district staff. Strongsville Athletic Boosters donated two thousand and fifteen dollars to the Strongsville High School volleyball team for the upcoming season. Southwest General Hospital donated one hundred and eleven Lenovo USB keyboards and thirty mice to be used by students throughout the district. Leonard Lane donated a fifty-dollar Staples gift card to Surarr Elementary Schools to be used for school supplies. Ken Mahalo, Mahalco, and Beverly Weir donated a hundred dollars to the Strongsville High School Piano Fund. Bob, Linda, Amy, and Lori Bendel donated fifty, five hundred dollars to the Strongsville High School Piano Fund. An anonymous donor contributed a hundred dollars to the Strongsville High School Piano Fund. Beth Storm donated two, twenty dollars to the Strongsville High School Piano Fund. Brenda Rosala donated ten dollars to the Strongsville High School Piano Fund. Sophia Mosley, or Mosley, donated ten dollars to the Strongsville High School Piano Fund. Hillary Needham donated twenty dollars to the Strongsville High School Piano Fund. Drew Kismikis donated a hundred dollars to the Strongsville High School Piano Fund. Nazreen Ali donated a hundred dollars to the Strongsville High School Piano Fund. St. Joseph's Catholic Church dos, donated miscellaneous school supplies to Whitney Elementary School. Aziz Ahmad conduct, conducted a school supply drive and donated, the collected miscellaneous school supplies to Whitney Elementary School. And the Narrows family donated miscellaneous books to teachers and the library for student use at Whitney Elementary School. And that concludes this section.
Excellent, that's some, that's a great list of gifts that came in, I mean, even the smallest, to the piano fund, I mean, that's huge, that add, I mean, those, those are adding up and adding up and adding up, and it doesn't have to be, you know, a huge donation, just, we really, really appreciate, you know, ten dollars, twenty dollars to that piano fund, I mean, it just speaks volumes to the people who appreciate what that thing's gonna do, and, and everyone who's, who's chipping in, the community's just chipping in to, to get it done, and that's, that's incredible, so, really moving, it's really nice.
Next, we have Director of Curriculum, Erin Green, with her report for the month. Erin?
Good evening. Um, tonight I have five items for your consideration. The first item is for the purchase of a leveled bookroom conversion kit, that includes nonfiction books, and the, um, it'll complete the leveled bookroom sets at each of the elementary buildings, for a total of seven thousand two hundred, eh, two hundred books at each building. Second item is recommendation to enter into an inter-district service area contract with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for the eighteen, nineteen school year, and that's shown in Exhibit F. Item three is the placement of a school psychology practicum student at the high school from September twenty-first through May thirty-first of two thousand nineteen. Fourth item is an out-of-state trip for Strongsville High School Boys and Girls Varsity Cross-Country Teams to travel to Rochester, New York, um, September twenty-ninth and thirtieth of two thousand eighteen. Transportation will be via chartered moto co, motor coach, and expenses will be paid by students through fundraising. And lastly, item five, uh, Strongsville High School German students, a trip to Germany, Austria, and Switzerland. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that permission be granted to Strongsville High School German teacher Christina Potter to travel with the German students to Germany, Austria, and Switzerland. Triple take place June fourteenth, I'm sorry, June fourth through the fifteenth, two thousand twenty. Expenses associated with the trip will be paid by the participating students, and if necessary, the trip may be postponed or the destination changed, depending on world events at the time. Any questions on those five items?
Did we, did I miss the conversion kit? Did you mention?
You did, that was the first item, scholastic leveled bookroom.
Okay, and that was the eighty-nine thousand one hundred?
Correct.
Okay.
And, Mr. Neso, I, I had the opportunity on Monday to see the, the leveled books at, at Whitney, actually, and it's quite a program, and it actually helps the teachers to figure out what skills they wanna teach, and which books best support those skills. So completing it, you know, at first I questioned it like you did, how much, how much it costs, but it seems to be a real good way to level out across all our elementary schools, how we approach teaching different concepts, so I think it's a good investment.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you for the extra work. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Erin's explanation.
Sure thing.
Uh, next, we have Andy Trigio, Director of Student Services, with the Student Service Report for the month. Andy?
Good evening, Board of Education, we have two, two items under Student Services. Uh, the first is tuition-free admission for a foreign exchange student from Germany, and as a side note, this student and his family asked the agency, who in Ohio is the best orchestra program, and the agency said Strongsville, and that's why he's here, his parents are both musicians.
Wow.
Um, and so, he is eager to join our program. Uh, the second item is a settlement resolution, in Exhibit G. Any questions?
Uh, I, on the tuition for the foreign exchange student, I get the benefit, I get all that.
Yeah.
Why do we do it for free?
It's a part of our board policy, that, uh, foreign exchange students are free tuition.
Well.
Provides great diversity to our student system. That's what it says, those are the rules.
He wanted to play in Euros, and George doesn't wanna pay the conversion fees.
You know, in all, in all honesty, you know, when you have, uh, foreign exchange students, it's a cultural benefit, not only for the student, but for us as a school district, uh, we're not adding teachers, we're not adding staff, we're not adding resources, um, and there are certain criteria of, uh, you know, when you have a foreign exchange student in terms of, you know, we're not issuing a diploma to that student, uh, it's for them to experience. I know Vicki's had plenty of foreign exchange students, uh, be a part of her family, uh, and go through the school system, so it truly is, uh, being a former high school principal and having, uh, foreign exchange students, it truly is a mutual benefit for both the kids, uh, and, uh, and, uh, the student visiting, and it's not an additional cost or burden to the district.
Okay, that's good news. Do you think maybe, at some point, we could meet him?
Absolutely, we, we have two, uh, we have two students this year, correct? One student from Japan, and one student from Germany, and we do, you know, we do have a process where Mr. Smithberger reviews, and, you know, we do, although we haven't got to that limit recently, but we do have a limit of where we would accept.
I mean, as long as we, we have seats, and, you know, there's not, there's not really any incremental cost, but it'd be great if we could get their impression of what they, what they think, you know, what they-
Do exit interviews.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, thank you. We need a vote, uh, Ms. Neso.
On the resolution, we need a vote. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, thank you, Duke.
Second.
Can I have a second? Thank you, Jane. Um, any discussion on the resolution, we all saw it, we all talked about it, I think we're good. Um, thank you, Andy, for working so hard to get, get it to the point that it is. Um, can you take a roll? Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Grisen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Next, with the Human Resources Report, we have Jenny Palco, our Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, I have the following items under Human Resources for your consideration this evening. Under E one, I have resignations for non-certificated staff, and one resignation for a certificated supplemental. Under E two, appointments for non-certificated staff, and appointments for certificated substitutes. Continuing under E two, appointments for non-certificated substitutes. Appointments for certificated supplemental contracts, appointments for certificated supplemental contracts, appointments for non-certificated supplemental contracts, and appointments for certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion, appointments for non-certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion, appointments for certificated testing consultants. Under E three, changes in hours for non-certificated staff. Under E four, change in status for non-certificated staff. Under E five, changes in salary for administrative staff, and changes in salary for certificated staff. Under E six, uh, stipends for extended school year, and stipends for our Jump Start, uh, program for summer, stipend for our Maker Space Camp, and stipends for our Resident Educator Committee, and stipends for our Resident Educator Mentors. And under E seven, uh, medical leave for an administrative staff member, and medical leaves for certificated staff members, continued by medical leaves for non-certificated staff members. Under E eight, we have security services, uh, provided by our Strongsville City, uh, Police Department, and under E nine, service agreement, uh, for Spanish First Class through Auxiliary Services. And finally, under E ten, we have one volunteer coach. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Nope, under E five, with, um, um, Mr. Smithberger, this means he completed his PhD?
He did.
Studies?
He did. Yes, congratulations to him, it's great, yeah.
It's Dr. Smithberger.
Oh, we have to call him Doctor?
Doctor, yes.
I'm not.
I don't know.
We'll check that out.
He did. Yes, congratulations to him.
That's great news.
Great, yeah.
It's Dr. Smithberger.
Is, oh, we have to call him Doctor?
Doctor, yes.
I'm not.
I don't know.
We'll check that out. We should, I'm going to.
Okay.
We do not have any items under Technology, so that includes, that concludes the superintendent's report for the month.
All right, catch up to this. All right, that brings us to our report on Polaris.
Thank you, Mr. Nayso. I wanted to give a shout-out to Mrs. Behenna in the, uh, at the middle school, they have a brand-new bacteria lab, uh, so they can, uh, help with the medical detectives, and I just wanna assure the community, no one's gonna get sick, but, uh, it is exciting, um, for the, uh, middle school students to, uh, have these extra tools. What is nice is that she did a lot of collaboration with the other teachers, um, at the middle school, truly was a group effort, and, uh, we're looking forward to seeing how, uh, that stuff grows and how, uh, I liked it, I'm glad someone caught it, and, um...
I'm sure the class is infectious.
But I'm sure, but we congratulate her and Mrs., and Mrs. DeLong on the project, and uh, I hope that the, uh, the budding medical detectives, uh, learn something. And then, um, there's been, again, the cot, the construction project at Polaris continues, uh, with school starting, there was a race to get, uh, a lot of the, uh, the new labs finished, um, but I encourage everyone to, to go to the Polaris, uh, Twitter site or the Polaris website, and you can see the pictures, um, and see all the, the new, uh, labs. We're bringing in a new welding lab, uh, with the help of Lincoln Electric, we're bringing in, uh, upgraded auto lab, upgraded H V A C. So, there's a lot of, uh, great programs that are being upgraded for our high school students, but also for our adult program, and that's exciting to have. And I wanted to just thank Frank Fabrizi again for being our, uh, seventh board member, uh, especially at this time, his, uh, industry knowledge, his construction knowledge has been really valuable, um, and really helped make sure that Polaris is delivering that same bang for the buck for its consortium the way we did here in Strongsville with the middle school and the high school. And that concludes my Polaris report.
Now, legislation?
Uh, the two things I wanted to comment on is that, uh, um, November sixth is Election Day, which means October ninth is the last day to register to vote. If you are concerned about whether you are registered or whether your registration is up to date, uh, the Secretary of State, John Houston, has a website called myohiovote.com where you can check your registration, you can register, you can get information on the upcoming election, so I encourage all the voters out there to make sure they're ready to vote and to vote on, uh, November sixth. And that concludes my legislative update.
Thank you. That brings us to the Board Liaison Reports. Uh, City Council, Jane?
Um, well, City Council has had a really short meeting, they are just getting underway after their recess in August, but they did recognize some special Olympic athletes, so, um, that was about the highlight of the meeting, I think.
And there were, there were Strongsville, the one was a Strongsville student, right, Nick?
Yeah, yes.
Nick Faran, I think his name was, um, Amy sent us an email just to make sure that we mentioned him and, um, gave him a shout-out for all his leadership role in the Special Olympics.
And Dana Martin, um, is a former staff member who's very involved with the Special Olympics as well.
Oh, excellent. Um, has, uh, the Education Foundation, um, anything new on, on that front?
Uh, we met earlier, uh, this week, uh, they are having an after-hours, uh, event, um, so they'll be sending out some invites and sharing some information, uh, shortly on that, um, but that was the main focus of the meeting this month.
Okay. I think I, I know the date of that, but I can't find it right now. I saw, I saw the email that came out and talked with J, Mr. Jungerberg, it's on, uh, October twenty-fifth at five o'clock at Jay Bellas, so, everybody come on out. Um, PTA, Jane or George?
I did not go, I think George attended the meeting, though.
Yep, um, our next meeting is October fourth, um, I was at the last meeting, um, rocking at the rec, we're looking at, uh, probably about a month, month and a half away. Um, there are a large number of, um, people doing fundraising currently, so I will get that list, and I'll have it ready for you for next, in the next meeting.
All right. Um, Student Achievement, Jane?
Uh, well, we have our report card that we saw, witnessed to of all our student achievement, but this year, I'm gonna focus on the middle school, so, um, next week, next month, we'll have highlights of everything that's going on at the middle school, and we started with our, uh, our little culture club that we have, so, that Richard.
All right, um, that brings us to Finance Committee meeting. We didn't have, we did not have a meeting, but we're looking to schedule one shortly, all right? We're just kicking around some dates.
I'll be sending out the entire calendar for the year.
Policy Committee?
All, all is quiet on the Policy Committee front.
A meeting with, uh, it's coming, we've got, uh, a meeting with the Neola representative next week, so we'll probably have something scheduled in the next month, and, uh...
Oh, joy.
It should be a fun one, it's a pretty thick box, so...
Oh, no.
Lots of pa, lots of laws changed, which means we have a lot of policies to go through.
Yeah. They're all routine.
We really wanna think about changing that Policy Committee meeting name, 'cause I, I don't think it reflects the true, like, excitement in that, you know? So, we might, we might wanna work on that, Richard, come up with something, you know?
It is not a well-kept secret, I will tell you that.
Uh, Facilities Committee?
Um, our first meeting after our summer break is next Thursday at Surar, so nine, nine-twenty-seven, and, um, all is welcome, everybody who wants to come, listen in, um, everybody's welcome to come, and the meeting starts at six-thirty.
Excellent, okay. Um, that brings us to the Consent Calendar, all items with an asterisk are adopted in a single vote. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Uh, there are no, uh, modifications to the consent calendar, so is there any?
Mr. Nayso, I had one change under, Item D, under the Treasury Report, just in the invoice order approvals where it said, uh, three hundred district managed student activity funds, the last one should also be in Fund Four-O-One for auxiliary service.
Okay, make that change. No, you need to make that change. Uh, any discussion of any of the items? All right, take, take a vote, George. Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nayso?
Yes.
Mr. Grozen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, Board of Education, another?
Um, I've got one. Um, the Taste of Strongsville is October fourth, Thursday, October fourth, at six-thirty at Petites. Um, it is an event that we hold once a year, um, the money that is raised goes towards scholarships and local charities, um, everything from children that are disadvantaged, um, families who sometimes just can't afford to have dinner, right? Um, and, and for our Strongsville graduating seniors, um, scholarships for those children. Um, Rotary does a, a lot of good within the community, and I ask everybody to consider coming out and supporting, um, that event, and it's a fun time. Um, please come out, again, Petites, Taste of Strongsville, you can hop on the Strongsville Rotary's website, um, buy a ticket, and come and join us, it's at six-thirty at Petites, um, right here on Pearl Road. Thank you.
Um, I would just say, we've got a big football game tomorrow night, Solon, um, the Mustangs are three and one, losing only to Mennor last week. Mennor's team is just, I mean, we, we played, it was forty-five, twenty, they have five guys who will be playing in the Big Ten next year, a, at a minimum, two to Michigan State, two to Ohio State, one to Michigan.
That was a monster team.
It's the largest high school in Ohio.
Yeah, and they, we played well against them, so I'm looking forward to the Solon game and the rest of the season, uh, we've got some fighters, and it's a, it's a, it's a lot of fun to watch, come on out.
Mr. Nayso?
Yes.
I just wanna remind the audience that the, uh, two thousand eighteen Serpentine Chevrolet Car Raffle is still ongoing, uh, twenty dollars a ticket, and only three thousand will be sold, uh, so it's a little bit like Willy Wonka's Golden Ticket, there's only three thousand, they are going fast and furious, uh, make sure to get them from a student athlete or at the Strongsville Middle School. Uh, it is a two thousand eighteen Chevy Cruze L S, and it has, uh, internet built into it, uh, so it would be a great car for, uh, any ages, uh, senior or younger. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank Robin for all the hard work.
I will, thank you.
Mr. Nayso?
Yep.
Um, I also would like to encourage the community to come out to the Strongsville Historical Society, um, on the weekend of September twenty-ninth and thirtieth, it is the annual Harvest Festival, and, uh, it's free to the public, so come and enjoy, you, all the houses are open, there are eight houses on the grounds, and, uh, demonstrators and other activities going on, you can maybe have some snickerdoodle cookies made in the log cabin.
You gonna sell cow pies again?
We're gonna have cow pies, I have cow pie tickets, yes. If anyone would like to buy a cow pie ticket, we have a lottery, and the winner wins...
The ticket or a cow pie?
A thousand dollars.
The ticket, not the cow.
Okay.
So, uh, again, I encourage everyone to come out, and, uh, it's always a fun time, so, thank you.
I'll be looking forward to buying my ticket in a few moments.
There you go, I have that right here.
Jane, when's the, um, the dinner?
The chicken dinner is this Saturday at the Strongsville United Methodist Church, you can also get tickets for that at the door, they are twelve dollars for adults, and that's from four-thirty to six-thirty.
A foul event.
And all the proceeds go to support the village and maintaining all those houses, I mean, those of you that have one house, imagine having to maintain eight houses, eight roofs, eight furnaces, eight air conditioners, so...
All right, any other others? Nope, all right. Um, um, brings us to meeting notifications. Special note, we will be moving the October fourth meeting back to October third, so instead of Thursday night, it'll be Wednesday night for all you people who dial in and watch us every week, and, uh, we appreciate that immensely, and, uh...
I was just curious why we're moving it.
Oh, why? Because we all want to attend the Taste of Strongsville event, and we feel it's our obligation to support an event that provides scholarships to our students, and it's a lot of fun. Um, the next meeting after that will be at its regular time, Thursday, October eighteenth, seven o'clock, they're all right here. Um, we do have need for executive session tonight on negotiations, I believe.
To review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, as well as to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations to state statutes.
I have a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you, Jane, thanks for all your seconds tonight, Jane.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Greatly appreciated. Um, can I have a vote?
It's not even lent.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta wait till... Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Nayso?
Yes.
Enter an executive session at? Eight-ten. I don't think we have any, uh, business when we resume, so thank you very much, see you at the football game, see you at the Historical Society, see you all around town, thanks for all your support and all your help.